Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Would you bow your hands and pray with me? Our Father which art in heaven, once again we come with our hearts full of thanksgiving, thanking you for another day of grace and mercy. Father, we ask you to look down on this civic meeting as we do the business of the city. And you be the judge, and you be the guide, and give us just decisions. We ask these blessings and all blessings in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please tell me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Yes, this is from.
Can we turn the roll, please?
That's attached.
Yeah, that's attached.
Okay.
The first is one. Here. Three step, or two.
Here.
Terry Rock, or three.
Here.
Tom McHulley, or four.
Here.
Terry Fox, Terry five.
Here.
And Taffrey, or six.
Here.
Thank you, and Mr. Redd, thank you for taking time to join us via phone this evening. I have the first order of business tonight is to approve the council meeting minutes from our March 4th meeting. Council, you've had these well in advance, and tonight had an opportunity to look them over, and now it would be an opportunity to make any edits to those minutes, or if there are none, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. I do know that we have a lot of people here tonight, and we appreciate that. I do want to give you a, just a housekeeping order on the front end. We are going to move the item, while I believe most of you are here tonight, we're going to move that to the final item on the agenda. That is not to dissuade anybody from staying, we're going to go through this rather quickly, but in order that we can just take as much time as we possibly need and want to take. So that's the reasoning for it, so I just wanted to make sure you saw that when we got to that portion of the agenda, you didn't go like, what are you doing here? All right, first order of business, AZ 21-03, Mr. Menino.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed annexation and rezoning. This case has been properly posted and advertised. There appears to be no conflicts of interest.
Mr. Menino, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. I'm told that we've got a motion to second on the minutes, but we never voted on the minutes. Is that the true statement? Somebody make a motion?
I thought we voted.
Did you move it? I'm sorry. Never mind.
I don't mind. Yeah, we voted.
Did they vote some answers?
Okay. Thank you. Take that out of the minutes. Mr. Menino, will you please continue?
Yes, and it has been reviewed based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. The applicant on this request owns the property at 112 U. Harley Road. As you can see on the display, this particular property sits between two city homes already. The applicant is looking to annex into the city jurisdiction. They've got city property on two sides and across the street from them. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this application. They went over and the information was provided to them from the analysis. I don't see the applicant. Oh, the applicant is here. The applicant is here, and they did present to the planning commission, and again, the planning commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy at this time on this item? Thank you, sir. I will open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of the request, AZ 21-03, and ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. And, oh, I'm sorry, come on forward, come on, no, we've got time.
I thought I heard you say speak for or against.
Yes, speak for or against, and anybody that comes forward to speak needs to give their name and their address for our clerk, please.
All right.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. My name is Makivia Crosby. My address is 112 U. Harley Road, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. I'm in place of my fiancee Courtney Stanley. I guess just to say recently purchased the residence as of January the 5th, went to get the bus schedule and what time the bus would pick her up, and the school advised me that it was county property. So from there, they forwarded me to all the steps of what I would need to take getting the home rezoned to city. So she's looking to stay at Cartersville, I want her at Cartersville, and just did everything that I could do, you know, to see what it is where we can remain a cane.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Again, public hearing for the zoning portion of AZ 21-03. Anybody wishing to make a comment for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the zoning portion of the application, and now open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of the request, AZ 21-03. And again, ask anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, they can do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the annexation portion of 21-03. And council, do you need any other questions or consideration? Thank you, this is a first reading. We'll take this up for a final vote at our meeting on April the 1st. Randy, if you'll move us on to the next item, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. We like the, all the applications on the agenda, they have been properly posted and advertised. With that, this is an application for a religious institution or a church located in a strip shopping center at 807 West Avenue, Suite D. The applicant has rented the suite to start their congregation at this particular location. With that, the individual departments that reviewed these have provided comments. There were some extensive comments from the fire department regarding the change in occupancy and the need to comply with, and the need to comply with codes with that change of occupancy. And with that, after that discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Randy on this item? Thank you, sir. Open up a public hearing for SU 21-01, and ask anybody wishing to step, anyone who cares to speak for or against, they may step forward at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 21-01. And again, council will take this up for final consideration on April 1st. Randy, SU 21-02, please.
Yes, this is also a special use permit to allow for an accessory apartment on a residential property. The applicant has an existing detached garage in the back behind their house that was built in 1985. They're in the middle of remodeling the house. At the same time, they're looking to remodel this garage and put the accessory apartment in there, and the applicant looks to live into it, live in this accessory apartment until the completion of the renovations on the home. These improvements also had to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. Because it is in a historic district, the Historic Preservation Commission did recommend approval of the proposed improvements to the home and the accessory structure, and with that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. Questions for Randy on this item?
I have one question, just from my own knowledge. After he's done with the renovation and he's moved back into the house, does this special use continue so he can still use that?
That is correct. He could use it as an apartment as approved, if the special use permit is approved.
It's a good question. Is there ever any situation where we give them a temporary special use?
Well-
Not that I oppose them having it perpetuated.
Technically, as a guest home or a guest house, they wouldn't even have to come through this process.
Got you.
But as an accessory apartment, it does require going through this process.
Thank you.
But yes, y'all can, that's your question, Mayor. You can actually limit a special use to a time period if you want to. Staff normally does not recommend that because it's very difficult for us to enforce and keep up over time.
Sure, I understand. All right, thank you.
Just for my knowledge.
Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for SU 21-02, and ask anybody who wishes to speak for or against to do so at this time.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd Morris with Copen Morris, 125 Post Dale Street here in Cartersville, representing the applicant. We are underway on this project. We actually will have two separate building permits. If you ride by, you'll notice we have done some work on the garage as part of our work we were doing on the original house in researching it, finding out who's going to need a special use permit. We stopped all work until we got that completed. Again, it will be a separate permit, same utilities, one meter on the house, but like I said, separate dwelling for the owner to live there until we finish the existing house.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Morris? Thank you, sir.
And he's moving here from Portland, Oregon, and he's very excited about being a Cardinal resident. I thought-
He'd be excited about getting out of Portland. Anyone else wishing to step forward and speak regarding SU 21-02, for or against may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 21-02. Again, council will take this up for final consideration at our meeting on April the 1st. Last one for you, Randy.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a staff-initiated text amendment to provide some clarification. There was some vagueness in the ordinance regarding chain link fencing and so forth, and to clear that up, David had put together some changes to that particular ordinance. If you look at your package, you can see the changes that were in red to provide better clarification on chain link fencing in the front yard, which it is not allowed, but it is inside and rear. And again, it's just a little more clearer in the way it's presented.
Okay.
Planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed changes.
Thank you. And is there any questions for Randy this time? Thank you, Randy. And we'll open up a public hearing for the text amendment T. 21-01, and ask anyone who cares to step forward, speak for or against at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T. 21-01. Council will have a second reading on this and take up consideration on April the 1st. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item.
Yes, Mayor. As y'all recall, at the last council meeting, we discussed the festivals we have in the downtown area and whether or not they should be made part of the downtown entertainment zone. Particularly with respect to the issue of whether or not the cups that are required for the downtown entertainment zone could also be used by the festivals. And so they wouldn't have to have separate cups and separate closed-off areas and all, and we forwarded that to the alcohol control board at y'all's recommendation, and they have recommended an amendment to the ordinance to allow the festivals to use the cups that are being used by the downtown entertainment zone when their hours overlap, and for the festival drinking areas also to be the same as the downtown entertainment zone when their hours overlap. And it was recommended for approval by the alcohol control board, and it is a first reading.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Keith on this item?
I guess my question would be, what if there's a festival when the, when it's not in those hours? Then it need be fenced off like-
It'll have to be fenced off as normal, and the alcohol, the DVA has the right to prescribe the types of containers that are used, and they may require different ones, or they may actually allow the same one.
Thank you. All right, once again, council, it's first reading of the ordinance, that takes two of them, and we will take that up on April the 1st. I've got two items to add to the agenda. Chair, will you entertain a motion to add those two items?
A second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Two items added. Go ahead, Mr. Lovell.
Yes, the first item, Mayor, as y'all recall, the voters in November approved increasing the home state exemption for educational purposes for people over 65 and disabled from 28,000 to 60,000 in the city of Cartersville. The Bartow County Tax Commissioner's Office has informed us that they need a resolution from the mayor and council stating that that did happen, so they can send that off to the state so it is properly credited when it becomes time to do property taxes. And this is basically what this resolution is for.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one for you, Keith.
Yes, Mayor, as y'all all know, we had an election on Tuesday of this week to authorize the school board to do $59.7 million in bonds. That election did pass. The vote was in favor of allowing for the bonds to be done. Because of that, y'all have to certify those election results, so we need to have you call a special call meeting next Tuesday morning at 9:30 to do so. The Bartow County's election superintendent will be certifying it on their end on this Friday, and then the city of Cartersville school board will be doing their certification on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? And if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to advertise for the meeting?
Just to schedule the meeting.
Schedule the meeting.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
See you all Tuesday at 9:30. Sidney, you got the next item? Lift station pump replacement. Mr. Forsyth, good evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sidney Forsyth, the Cartersville Water Department. This is a submersible pump, and our main street sewer lift station has failed. It's a 1998 model pump. We've solicited cost estimates for a replacement and repair, and the repair cost was 13,500, I mean 13,500, I'm used to big numbers, sorry. And replacement was 17,564.70. We're recommending replacement of this pump for 17,564.70 from flight. It's a budgeted item.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Sidney on this item? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Sidney.
Yes, sir, this is a flight mixer, which is actually inside the plant. It's a homogenizing mixer for the wastewater treatment. Again, here, we solicited repair and replacement costs for this mixer. The repair was roughly half of the cost of a new mixer. We're recommending repairing this mixer at $9,527.91. It's a budgeted item.
Okay, questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. Mr. Dooley, you're up next.
Mayor and Council, good evening. The electric department is seeking approval of the purchase of a vacuum excavation trailer. This device will be a huge help when we have to set poles in tight spots and where we need to pothole an existing underground facility. This machine basically works like a huge vacuum cleaner that sucks all the soil up through a pipe, allowing us to put eyes on what's in the ground already and keep us from damaging it further. The electric department is requesting your approval to purchase the vacuum excavator trailer from Vermeer for $55,880. It is a budgeted expense. It also includes the trailer, all the hoses and the tanks, as well as a three-year warranty. And I checked, you asked earlier about sharing equipment, and I believe the gas department does have one, but it's not always readily available in emergency situations, but that would be the reason to purchase our own.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, John. Any questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hill, you got the next item?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. What I'm bringing for you today is a tax bill from Monroe County, Mississippi. This is for a storage area that we, where we keep gas that we don't burn, and for future references here. It's, the bill is $7,736.98. It is a budgeted item, of course.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Gillum, you got the next couple, I believe?
Yes, sir, good evening, Mayor and Council. First off is the bid award purchase for the Grasshopper Zero Turn mower. The property recreation department sent out a request for bid on February 2nd of this year. We received 10 bids, and the lowest quote that met all the specifications came in from Franklin Tractor in the amount of 13,267.48. This is for a Grasshopper Zero Turn mower with a 61-inch deck, and we are recommending purchase in the amount of 13,267.48.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on this purchase? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one for you, Tom.
Next one is an addendum to the existing contract with Etowah Disc Golf regarding the disc golf course over at Deerfield Park. Sam Barfield, who the designer with Etowah Disc Golf, approached us with a proposal. We originally were going to do the tee pads using the artificial turf, and he wanted to do concrete tee pads. So in lieu of us not doing concrete tee pads, he proposed to us that Etowah Disc Golf would install the concrete tee pads, and they would pay for them themselves. The contract states that he would give 20% per tournament for his gross registration fees, so the addendum says that we'll waive those fees, and he'll pay a $25 permit fee per tournament, and that'll be in effect until June 30th, 2024, when it'll revert back to the 20% per tournament.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Tom on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Porter, you have got the next item?
Yes, Mayor. We recently took an RFP for the 178 West Main Street, the old police station site there to potential great redevelopment. We've received one proposal, and in Sidney's best interest, I would recommend that we reject that proposal and look forward to redoing the RFP in the future.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Not a motion?
Motion to reject the proposal.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Good tap out on that? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Tom, you've got the financial report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we will be looking at the January 2021 and comparing to January 2020. The general fund revenue has decreased by last, over last January by $1 million. Expenses have decreased by $559,000. Local office sales tax has decreased by $28,000. Building permits and inspection fees also decreased by $65,000. Water and sewer fund revenue decreased over the last year by $672,000. Expenses decreased by $451,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased transfers into the general fund. And the gas fund revenue decreased from last year by $408,000. Expenses decreased by $31,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, increased debt service expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And the electric fund revenue decreased from last year by $747,000. Expenses increased by $557,000. This is due to increased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of personal electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund revenue decreased from last January by $75,000. Expenses increased by $26,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund revenue decreased from last year by $311,000. Expenses decreased by $137,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, the fiber optics fund revenues increased from last year by $18,000. Expenses increased by $72,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And our cash position for the month of January, unrestricted cash increased a little bit, and total restricted cash increased also. And the splice funds, splice 2003, 2003 has a balance as of January of nearly $27,000. Splice 2014 has a balance of nearly $533,000, and splice 2020 has a balance of $2.8 million. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys hear that?
Mr. Mayor, we're seven months into a year, and fortunately, we, with COVID, even with COVID, we've done fairly well trying to hold the line on expenses as we continue through the rest of this year. Gas department, as you can see, has turned the corner with the winter months being December and January. Hopefully, that continues longer for us, but in general, we are trying to hold the line on our expenses.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Tom or Dan on the financial report?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Final item on the agenda, thank you all for being patient, and we'll move on to the discussion of gymnastics provider. I want to thank everyone who's here tonight, and everyone who's called and emailed regarding the Cartersville Twisters, the gymnastics program. To those who emailed, I want to tell you that I couldn't respond to all of you, but I want to let you know that I did read all of them, and I'm sure the same holds true for everybody on council and staff. The decision before council is not about eliminating a program, it's about continuing a program under a different model by using a program provider. It is the same model that we've used for other programs where provider manages some of the administrative duties and scheduling of practices and games. Those providers answer directly to our program manager about all aspects of the program, and it must be approved by the city. What's unique and difficult about this program is that unlike the others, this involves city of Cartersville employees. This is not lost on anyone. Their commitment to this program and the quality of their work is not in question. What is in question is the use of public funds to underwrite the financial losses that the competitive gymnastics program incurred. This year, we are on track to have around $150,000 loss on this one program. Running at a significant loss has been the case for this program for several years. Many have commented that it shouldn't be all about the money, and I agree with that, but some of that should be. As elected officials, you want us making the most of every public dollar while providing quality service. The city has been committed to this program to the extent that we have five full-time employees dedicated solely to gymnastics. Comparatively, we have one full-time person for aquatics, one for tennis, and one program manager that oversees all of the other programs that are administered out. This is simply not sustainable, given the number of participants and what they are paying. Some have said this should not come as a total surprise, that this comes as a total surprise. It shouldn't have. Last year, the gymnastics program was asked to create a more sustainable model. There were two separate meetings with parents, with then-city manager Tamara Brock, to discuss the financial impact of the program. An agreement was reached for boosters to pay for their own part-time employee and to cover the traveling expenses for competitive meets, something that was previously paid for by the city. The city council has expressed concern about the losses in this program for the last several years, and we asked city staff to explore options, including finding another provider that could provide the same quality service at a more fiscally responsible price. When we searched for options, of course, we started in our own community. We asked them first, and Stingray said they were interested. Other options would have been in Calhoun, Canton, and Kennesaw, or quite frankly, somewhere not even in our county. And I want to reiterate, and I saw some heads shaking the first time I said it, but I'll say it again. My perspective is that this decision is being made to continue providing this service as opposed to eliminating. What I'm going to ask council to do, what, if I was... The way I'd like to proceed this evening is I would like to ask council, there have been a number of people here, and they have asked us to delay the decision for two weeks so that they can perhaps discuss, they've asked us to slow it down. What I'd like to do is I'd like to ask council to table this item tonight, and then after that, I'd like to call forward Andy Schultz with Stingray's to talk about what he plans to do with the program. And then after that, I'd like to give every single person that chooses to step forward and speak and tell us what they want to say, to have the opportunity to speak. We will limit comments to two minutes each to give everybody the opportunity to speak. And again, thank you for being here and being a part of the local government, that's why we're here. So at this time, I'll ask council if there's a motion to table the item.
Make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Got a motion to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And Mayor, just to explain to the audience what happens when we table an item, that means it comes up on the next agenda if the council takes it off the table. And the next meeting is April 1st.
April 1st, and it is our full intent to take it off the table at that time.
Yeah.
And take action on it.
So just so everybody's aware of what is meant by that.
That being said, in the interest of knowing what, because again, I know there's information out there, there's also misinformation out there, and in the interest of that, my hope is in these two weeks, is that there will be an opportunity for concerned parents to have a discussion or meeting that the city is happy to facilitate with- to have a discussion or meeting that the city is happy to facilitate with the potential program provider, that is Stingrays, and I'll ask Andy Schultz to please step forward and tell council what his plans are for this gymnastics program. And again, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Hello, Mayor Carrollton, my name is Andy Schultz, owner of Stingrays Gymnastics in Cartersville. My current address is 332 Hefbeet Trail, that's in Kennesaw, Georgia. Again, thank you for allowing this opportunity for us to be here. Have a slightly prepared statement. Our intention is to transition our existing Stingrays Gymnastics program into the city facility. Currently, our program in Cartersville has over 150 athletes between preschool gymnastics, recreational gymnastics, and team gymnastics. Vicky Mauser, who's here tonight as well, is our gymnastics director and has over 25 years of experience in the field of gymnastics. She's been everything from a coach, director, to a facility owner, and at one time worked for the rec department here in the city as well. Our goal is to work as close and as transparently as possible with the current recreational and team parents at the Cartersville Twisters. While we kind of navigate the decision-making process in this transition, we also plan on continuing to offer most of the same programs that are currently being offered. Everything from preschool recreation, recreational gymnastics, and team gymnastics in that facility.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Schultz?
I know that earlier in the work session, it was brought up, so there's a question about young men, boys, programs.
Yes.
And then the, and I'm not a gymnastics person, so I do have a daughter that's at your gym right now, but not in gymnastics. And then the elite, like level seven, eight, nine, whatever that may be. Can you address that?
I can do my best, Vicky may be a little better.
She's welcome to speak if you'd rather have her answer, anybody that wants to.
I can take it apart.
I mean, at this time, as far as keeping everything, we want to keep everything that we can possibly keep. The idea is to be able to offer positions to some of the current staff and keep them on so that nothing changes.
A lot of our restrictions are, as far as our gymnastics program, have to do with our facility and equipment and not coaching. We lack the necessary tools to work elite skills into a pit, for instance, those type of things.
Okay, and for our clerk, she'll appreciate your name and your address.
I'm sorry, Victoria Mauser, and my current address is 52 Hamilton Boulevard Northwest, Cartersville.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I think the, and I think you maybe said that you didn't have, don't have the equipment at where you're at now and where we have the, keeping the boys and keeping that program together, I think is very important. I think that, as I stated before, I think one of the things we don't want, that I don't want to see, I don't want to speak for council, but is seeing a level of what we have now drop, but to maintain that level.
Absolutely, and that's why we're hoping to offer jobs to.
And that, yeah, so I think that that's important. I think the other point that I raised earlier, or one thing that we discussed is in the proposal, there are, I think, is very important, I think, to keep the, if we're going to, if you're going to be a provider to the Parks and Rec part, department, and I think it's very important to keep a separation of branding. I think that that, the twister branding is, that Cartersville Park and Rec has had has, is pretty big and I think that's an important piece. I know to me, it would be.
But technically, the Twisters is the Booster Club, correct?
Okay.
And we will not keep the Booster Club.
Okay, so, so then what, so if we look at 1.9, then are you going to bring in, what branding then to the city, then Park and Rec Department would you bring?
Probably Stingrays at Cartersville or Stingrays Park and Rec.
We were not fully aware of that part of these, so we don't have anything prepared for that. We assumed it would still be able to be Stingrays Gymnastics. If it is something that has to be, to be augmented or changed, we're willing to do that, but we would like to keep the Stingrays brand.
Okay, I think that's the point of discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. I'll open up the floor, anybody who wishes to speak, come on up. And again, as, as people come forward, if you'll please give your name and your address as for our clerk. And we are, we are keeping, trying to keep everybody at two minutes, so everybody that cares to speak has an opportunity to speak tonight.
Do you want me to have Tom?
Yes, please.
My name is Erica Swetler. I live at 5160 Proctor Landing Northwest, Acworth, Georgia, 30101. And we will not be having multiple people talk tonight because I was informed in my meeting yesterday that that, that they would not be allowing more than just a couple of people because they did not want to hear multiple pleas of hearing the same thing.
Can I, can I ask you who told you that?
That would be Dan.
I suggested that if you have same people saying the same thing over and over repeatedly, it's.
Which honest, which.
Like the mayor has the floor, he can.
You take as much time as you want.
Thank you.
And then everybody else that comes up, and again, every single person that's here has something to say and would like to say it, we want to hear it.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Dear ladies and gentlemen of the City of Cartersville Government, my name is Erica Swetler, and I am the President of Cartersville Twisters Booster Club. My position is to serve as a voluntary advocate for all the athletes, parents, and at necessary times, the coaches of Cartersville Twisters Gymnastics. I also have a daughter who is a Level 8 gymnast at Cartersville Twisters. Most of our coaches could not come tonight because they have a different schedule, a different kind of workday that doesn't end until closer to 9:30, so I am speaking for them on their behalf. Two days ago, on March 16th, our coaches were unexpectedly, you could even say blindsided, with the information that their employment.
I hate to, I hate to interrupt you. It's just distracting, I can't hear what's going on.
Mark, please.
So. Come in here, there's an open seat right here. Come over here.
Tom, could you give your seat to that gentleman?
And again, I apologize for interrupting, I want to make sure I can focus on what you're saying.
I appreciate that, thank you. They were blindsiding even with the information that their employment with the City of Cartersville would be terminated, effective May 31st, 2021, by Tom, the Parks and Rec Director, and Dan, the City Manager. Shortly after they were informed, I received an email from Tom letting me know that he would like to see me Wednesday morning for a meeting. And while discussing a time, I was informed that I would be meeting with him and Dan at City Hall. I wasn't initially concerned at the Booster Club was because we were currently in an agreement with them regarding the additional coach that we personally took responsibility for last year, and we had been anticipating hearing from him that we would need to cover that expense for another fiscal year. At 3:15 yesterday afternoon, Coach Andre called me and asked if I was available to meet that evening as the city had given them big news. I agreed to meet with him along with my husband Eric at 4:15. During that meeting, I was informed that the coaches had all just received notice of their termination with no explanation other than the program runs a deficit. They would be offered no type of severance package and receive no guaranteed employment somewhere else in the city. They were also informed that Stingrays would be taking over the building as part of an agreement with the City of Cartersville. No option was given to the coaches if they would like to consider any kind of personal rental agreement or to be a program provider, as that is the wording in the agreement with Stingrays. No option was given to the Booster Club to see if we would like to financially handle being the program provider. No discussion by city officials was held with any of the coaches to see in order to cut the cost of the program, if any of them were open to the idea of becoming part-time instead of full-time employees, reducing their salaries and cutting their benefits, therefore reducing the deficit. Not once this fiscal year has anyone from the city given the coaches or the Booster Club notice that this was a possibility so that we could calmly and collectively look into solutions. None of these things were brought up ahead of time as a way of trying to keep a very successfully nationally-known program in place. Instead, the city manager and the head of Parks and Rec secretly put together an agreement with Stingrays, who we do not find any fault with, to take over June 1st of this year. I went to the meeting with Tom and Dan yesterday morning, and I brought along another parent and member of the Booster Club family, Kate Rogers, as a witness. There, they verified all that Coach Andre had told me the day before. They were willing to answer all the questions, which were many, that I had. However, the one question they both struggled to answer, because there is no good answer, based on the fact that it's horrible business practice and ethically wrong, is why the coaches were only given two days' notice that this agreement with Stingrays was being brought to city council. Imagine our surprise when we then find out that the intention was not only to share the agreement at this meeting, but to vote on it. As the Booster Club President, I was technically getting one day of notice from the city prior to this meeting. They knew that this agreement with Stingrays was being put together four to six weeks prior to this meeting. Well, we are not asking you to say no to this agreement with Stingrays. We are asking you to please hold off on a vote, which you did agree on earlier today, so thank you, to find out if this agreement truly is the one and only option for Cartersville Twisters Gymnastics moving forward. Ideally, we would like a month, or rather, two city council meetings from now to have the ability to thoroughly research what it would take to run a gymnastics program financially and from an official business standpoint. However, if you cannot give us a month, please give us at least until the next city council meeting on April 1st to gather information prior to casting your votes. We are also asking that Stingrays be required to clarify their intentions regarding keeping our boys program and an upper-level girls program as they currently show no proof that that is part of the offered programs. Because much of their agreement with the city is dependent upon enrollment and revenue, and we know many of our current gymnasts would leave if our coaches leave, we are asking that if they have the intent to retain our coaches for their program, that they make reasonable and competitive financial offers to the coaches by next Friday, March 26th. At my meeting yesterday with Dan and Tom, I was told that we would be offered a comparable program to what we have now, which is nothing short of outstanding due to a phenomenal coaching staff. However, upon information I have received following discussions some members of the Booster Club have had with staff members at Stingrays in the last 30 hours, there are still several unanswered questions due to them admittedly not having done a lot of planning. We believe their intentions are good. However, without our coaches being part of the program they are planning, there is no way that they can offer our athletes the same quality coaching they currently have if their programs are even still being offered. Many athletes will be forced to leave if they cannot provide a boys program, a girls program beyond level six, and honestly, several will leave because coach loyalty is a strong pull in this sport and gymnastics will follow, gymnasts will follow where the coaches go. It's not meant to be a threat, it's just an honest truth about this sport. Stingrays needs these particular coaches, and if we want a smooth transition, those financial offers need to happen and they need to provide proof they will truly be offering a comparable program. We realize also that a large concern of the city government is the tax burden on the taxpayers of Cartersville and that many of our upper-level gymnasts are not city residents. While we do understand your position on this, we are asking that you please also consider that our out-of-city parents are helping your city's economy. Many of our out-of-city or county residents frequently shop, go out to eat, and some have even bought their cars recently here in Cartersville while their children are at practice. Cartersville Twisters also hosts three meets a year, which brings anywhere from 500 to 2,000 people over the course of a weekend to spend money at hotels, restaurants, and local businesses while they are in town. So we do help your economy, even if not all our members pay city taxes. Gymnasts are coming from out of the city and county to Cartersville for these coaches because we know they provide coaching that is second to none. We have already received phone calls from parents at other gyms wanting to transfer after this season is over, which is sometime in the next two months depending on level and gender, and they plan to come here because of our excellent reputation. In closing, I know many of you have received an enormous amount of emails and phone calls in the last two days as the CTG family, past and present, has rallied around this cause. Obviously, many people do not want this program to go by the wayside. And if a comparable, comparable program for boys and girls isn't offered with the superb coaching we have, it is an end of this program. I want to say once more, we are not completely against Stingrays taking over. We just want them to clarify their intentions quickly with our coaches on financial offers and exact program offerings we can expect. We have no ill will towards them whatsoever, and they have been very kind to members of our club that have reached out to them in the last two days with questions. I don't know that we can come up with an offer similar to what has been put together by the city and Stingrays, but we would like to have time to try and also, if possible, discuss any other possibilities with the city manager and Parks and Rec to see if other options are available. To do that, we need you to hold on and not vote tonight and give us some time to adequately look into various possibilities. Finally, I hope that you see how wrong this was handled by the city officials who knew this was being planned and remained quiet until springing the surprise of unemployment on our coaches and turning our program upside down. This could have been handled so much better and made for a much smoother transition if that is what eventually happens. The lack of respect in the notifications to our coaches Andre, Louisa, Sasha, Galena, and Angela was completely uncalled for, morally wrong, and completely unethical. These amazing coaches, who have spent years devoted to the growth of children, not only as athletes, but also as responsible individuals who have grown into respected citizens of the city here and in other places around the country, deserved better. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to clarify just a couple things. Number one, as I said earlier, the decision that we have at hand has nothing to do with the level of commitment or the quality of the work of the people that are impacted by this, and the fact that there are people impacted by this is, is not something that we take lightly. I will tell you that as far as the notification goes, that whenever we put out that we are going to take an action, that, well, pause for applause. Whenever there is, that was the way we had to do it, and it was the ethical thing to do, and let me explain. Earlier this week, Mr. Porter asked me, he says, "Do you want to go ahead and put this on the agenda?" And I said, "This is something that council has considered making adjustments to for several years." And again, it was communicated last year that there were some, there were some concerns.
I'll agree with that.
And, and that was even made to staff and directly to staff, and there were meetings with parents. The caveat was, once we put it on an agenda, once we put it in this public document that says that's the action that we're going to take because we're being open and honest with the people that we're representing, it then becomes a public document. And the one thing that Dan and I both shared a deep concern about, and I'm sure everybody up here does too, is that we do have people that have given an awful lot to the City of Cartersville and that we are, that we did not want them to learn about a potential decision that would affect their employment online, or in the newspaper, or on the radio, or from anywhere else. And so, if you want to be mad at somebody, you can be mad at me, but the decision was made, hey, if we're going to, A, we need to put this on the agenda, because let me tell you what we could have done, and again, this would have been wrong and irreprehensible, we could have, you know, we added those two items to the agenda earlier tonight. We could have just as easily added that agenda, that item to the agenda and taken care of it and done it tonight, and nobody would have been here. That's not the way that we operate as a city.
But it's two days.
If we'd have given it, that's when we put out the agenda for the council meeting.
That's when we get.
That's when, that's when we got it, so.
But the agreement started being put together four to six weeks ago, as I was informed. Why weren't our coaches given a choice? Why wasn't the Booster Club given a choice?
Ma'am, I gave you an opportunity to speak, please, let me, because we're not, we're not going to argue, I'm just, I'm trying to explain, you had, you had something, I'm trying to explain it back to you, okay? The moment that we make that public, we wanted to make sure that the employees knew what the city council was, was going to be considering, and we wanted to make sure that they knew so that we could give them the notification. I understand if we'd have put it out, and again, we've done exactly what you've asked, and I think it is the right thing to do, and delaying this for two weeks so that there is time.
That's true.
For things to happen. So again, I, I understand, but I just want, I did want to clarify the fact that the claim that there was something that was unethical or underhanded done by city staff, that's, I would simply just disagree with that. This was the way to professionally handle it, to make sure that they were given notification regardless of how short you may have felt that notification was. It was paramount to us that they were notified about this potential change directly from city staff directly before it was made out publicly.
I see your point.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to step forward and speak may do so at this time, you come on up and, and you've got two minutes, okay? And again, your name and your address for our. And again, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name is Wyn Hernandez and it's 3157 Justice Mill Court, 30144. I was, I came in eighty-six as the gymnastics director, retired in oh-six. And we gained a lot during that time. I gained those coaches. But I think the question, from what I'm hearing, is if the Stingrays take over, if I heard it correctly, and my hearing's bad, they were going to maybe keep the coaches, keep some of those coaches. But who is going to pay the coaches? City going to still pay them or is Stingray going to pay them?
They would become, if Stingrays choose to employ them, then Stingrays would pay them.
Okay, I hope, I have not talked to Andre about this, but he may hurt me when I go out the door. But is there any way, I don't know if all of y'all are aware, but we hired him in August of nineteen seventy-nine. I'm sorry, fifty-seven. And, did I say that? Anyway, it was a year before the Olympics, okay. The, if he's terminated the end of May, he will be one year and three months short of full retirement from the city of Cartersville. So, if you don't want to pay him his pension, you can throw him out.
Philip Hardy, fourteen Granger Drive, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. So, we are a fourteen-year member of the club program. My oldest son Garrison went through it, Level Ten. Nate is in it right now, Level Ten Elite. And Elizabeth just finished up there as a Level Seven on the girls program. And I am in much agreement with Erica in that we understand the financial side of it and that the deficit is run. That actually began, we found out about it fifteen years ago, fourteen years ago, when we first came here. That was a huge issue in one of our Booster Club meetings that we had. And I get that that's water under the bridge. But given the deficit that we had at that time or have been running all along the same years, all these years, there's never been an ask for an increase in dues to recover that deficit or to make that money up as far as with the city. So, you know, that was one option that we had thought of. Privatizing it, personally, I don't think is a bad idea. I mean, I get it, it's a business sense. And I'm in the same situation as a lot of our other parents because I do have a Level Ten Elite. His best friend, Danilo Visiani, is on the regional elite team who represents our city in, you know, all around the country. Brody Malone, who came from this program, will be most likely on the twenty-two Olympic team next year, again, from our club team. So, what I'm saying is, is we want to try to, and I get that it's not up to y'all to maintain the integrity of the team and the coaching staff. And really, what I want to put out for it is to, Andy, nice to meet you, we spoke the other day, is to just influence in some way the consistency of our coaching staff. Because it really is why several people come from the county, from other cities, to this program to be a part of the Cartersville Twisters. So, anything as a parent that you guys would like to ask, feel free to ask me.
So, do you know what current rates are for a gymnastics program? How far off are we comparatively to the places? I mean, this is your profession.
Well, I mean, I feel like a professional gymnast. So, we pay four-hundred-and-seventy-ish dollars every seven weeks. Nate practices twenty-three or twenty-four hours a week. That goes up in the summer. Literally, he goes to, during the school year, he goes to school, he goes to gym, comes home at eight forty-five at night. He's been ranked number ten in the nation. I do know that club, we've never even thought of going to another facility, except last summer when the program got shut down for coronavirus and we thought we were losing the boys program then. We went to Xenit, which is an awful, I mean, it's the closest place we can go. But, you know, I get that their program is more expensive than privatizing it. I mean, I get that. If you, if, we did the math last night, and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, there's seventy-ish gymnasts. If you divide that by the seventy gymnasts by twelve months, I mean, you're looking at an increase of a hundred and fifty-four dollars a year and you have the hundred and thirty thousand covered. That's, I mean, to me, that, I would like, I mean, I can pay a hundred and fifty-four dollars a month extra to keep our coaches, and that's what I would do, you know.
Do you think everybody will?
Sir, ma'am?
Do you think everybody will?
I would say, of the program, and that's seventy club members. That's not the hundred and forty-some-odd rec kids. I would think, I mean, certainly, we would to keep Nate in that program. And I'm sure Danilo's dad's out there, and, I mean, he's a D-one college prospect. He's being actively recruited by colleges. And, I mean, he needs Coach Andre, that's all. The connection that a gymnast and a coach have is, I mean, it's the skills that they do. They literally, they put their life in their hands to do these skills. I mean, names, you know, Nate comes home, I did this such-and-such flippy deal, you know, and I've been around it for fifteen years, I still don't know the names of them. But, I mean, I've seen the difficulties, I've seen the trial and error and the fail and the comeback and, I'm going to tell you, they're tight with their coaches. So, and this past summer was tough to go to Xenit and not have Andre there. But does that, I mean, I get it, it's more expensive, but we, I'm up for it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And you can see I'm very bad at keeping the two-minute rule, so. I'm going to try to be better so nobody takes it personally.
Good evening, y'all. My name's Caroline Womack. My address is seven-one-six West Avenue. I'm here as probably more a rec league parent than anything. My daughter Olivia is five years old and my daughter Emily is seven. And she was in a rec league class for three weeks and Coach Andre saw something in her and put her on the team. And if you have a child and a coach sees something in your child that you don't and sees them in that way, it changes things. This is not just a gym for a lot of us, this is a family. And what you can't see out there is that you've got mom and daddies to the stairwell. You've got six little girls sitting on a carpet crying because they think this is all over. The only thing I'm asking for is give us a little time, like, let us make it right. I know that this has probably been going on and we don't know, but as parents, let us come up with some money, let us figure something out, we'll do whatever it takes. So, my plea is, give us a little bit of time here before you do something permanent. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Ellington and I live at five-oh-one West Avenue. I am a rec Gigi. My little five-year-old granddaughter participates and loves it and can't wait until her lessons on Thursday afternoons. So, I, you know, I want it to stay as it is and I'm backing these teen parents. But one thing I would like to know, you know, so you've been working with these other company for how many weeks now?
It's probably five to six weeks.
Okay, and there are questions that they can't even answer. I believe it was Mr. Roth asked a question about the boys program and we went into a diatribe about employment of the existing coaches, which is important, but the question was never even answered. And they've been, and they've had this for several weeks. So, that's concerning that we're looking at moving to a program that can't answer questions when they've been aware of what's going on for several weeks.
And I don't want to interrupt you, but can I address that?
Sure, absolutely.
I believe it would be inappropriate for them to reach out to anybody regarding employment, A, before they're notified by the city that this council even approved that agreement. So, they're not under an agreement, so, again, if they had approached these coaches three or four weeks ago, then they would have learned today.
You, you're missing, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but you are missing the vote too. I believe Mr. Roth asked about a boys program, about the boys program. And what were their plans, because, and I found out about this late last night. I haven't even been aware of this for twenty-four hours. So, I don't know if they have a boys program. I am, from what I've seen, I am speculating that they do not. And we can't get an answer on what we're going to do about a boys program for an organization that's been aware of this for several weeks. And that's concerning from an administrative standpoint that they don't have those ducks in a row yet.
Thank you. I would also point out that last year at this time, the people that ran the gymnastics program were wanting to end it and it were the people up here that didn't allow them to do it, so. Anyone else?
I'm going to watch for two minutes, so.
Lloyd, I've known you too long.
Lloyd Williamson, I'm almost, Lloyd Williamson, two-fifty-two, Highway two-ninety-three, Cartersville, Georgia. This time of the year, I'm more at home at six-eleven North Tennessee Street, which Gary will know why, so, but. I've got five grand, six grandkids, four of them in gymnastics. Four of them, all four of them started at Stingrays. Three of them are still at Stingrays. My oldest one, been in gymnastics eight years, was told she had to go somewhere else because they could not teach her, she was getting too good. So, they came to the Twisters and they've done great, she's starting Level Nine. And she's been told, been to University of Georgia for the camp. She makes Level Ten, she gets a scholarship. And she's only eleven years old. So, there's, I don't know how many over there doing Level Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, which Stingrays can't do. One thing to offset the deficit is, we pay more for Stingrays than we do to the Twisters. Her mother, my mother and I, my wife and I pay for all the grandkids, so we know how much is paid, go up on the dues over there. In forty years, I've done thousands, I'm dating myself, of audits. I've never seen a city yet run a surplus in recreation. It's always funded by other areas, it's always. So, the only thing I could say is, you've got to have somebody able to coach Level Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten, which they cannot because they told us, she's too good, she's going to have to go somewhere else. We don't do that. So, that's reading, everybody's over here, Twisters, y'all've got a good program. And if they're, you know, I just hate to see that someone who can't do that goes in over there, then what are you going to do with all the kids over there? So, that's my two minutes, Lloyd Williamson, thanks.
My name is Mark Cash. I live at thirty-one Autumn Turn in Cartersville, three-oh-one-two-one. One of the members had brought up the point that it'd be a hundred and fifty-four dollars more a month, and that number is incorrect. With that number, so we have seventy-two gymnasts that are on the team. Out of those seventy-two gymnasts, each of them pays roughly one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. That comes to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, sixty-five dollars. The rec department makes about a hundred thousand. So, my question is this, if you add up the expenses for the gym, including the salaries and the utilities and all of that, everything that, you know, obviously costs, how much a deficit are we running? Do we know?
Currently, right now, through March seventeenth, we're running a deficit of a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars approximately, right at that amount. And by the end of this fiscal year, because you only have one more session left, and if they did the summer program for June, you're still looking at about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollar approximate deficit this fiscal year. Tell you, last fiscal year with COVID, we had about a two-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar deficit. The year prior was about seventy-four thousand-dollar deficit. But every year, this program has been running a deficit for many, many years. Ten, fifteen, even one gentleman even knew it's been running for a long time. The prior recreation director, we've gone up on rates, but still not up.
From the numbers that, and thank you, for the numbers that I see, or we in general, I guess some of us feel as though you rob Peter to pay Paul, you know, in a sense that, like the gentleman had mentioned, there's not one park in Cartersville that makes money. It's all a service. I don't care if it's Dellinger, Sam Smith, you name it, all of them lose money, you know? So, the question is, how much? You know, I feel that the numbers that we're seeing, you know, if our gymnasts are bringing in a hundred and thirty-five thousand, our coaches pay maybe two-fifty, utilities fourteen, fifteen thousand a year, that's only an eight-thousand-dollar deficit.
I'm not going to get into, I know, and please, I'm not trying to, I wasn't trying to attack you, I came across that way. We're not going to really discuss people's employee salaries and what that is, but I would tell you that you're significantly off.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, like I said, it's just from what we see and I don't, you know.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Alexis Pritchard. Sixteen Stratford Lane, here in Cartersville. And I wasn't going to say anything today until I saw my coach from about twenty-six years ago, Ms. H, come and speak. And we've got to talk about quality, guys. Just the other day, we watched a video released about the football program in Cartersville City Schools and how we want to watch quality playing happen from early, early to late, late high school, college. Cartersville Twisters has been a staple in this community for a very long time. And I don't just mean the name, because you can take a Stingrays name and change it to Twisters. This coaching staff, the Kuznetsov's, have been in Cartersville for over twenty-five years. They have been a part of this community and they have devoted their careers to making sure that quality instruction is given to these gymnasts. Structure, a regimen, discipline, things that we see at the high school. The Hardy family and all of the other elite gymnasts come to, it spreads out over disciplines, not just in the gym. We see it in the classroom, we see it as Nate is applying to, or applied to the Air Force Academy. It shows. These are not parents that coach, they don't choose to volunteer their time and give it, this is their livelihood. So, they put forth excellent, excellent care and instruction of top-notch qualities that I want my child to be a part of. We don't see, God love them, high schoolers, we don't see high schoolers employed and to babysit our kids. We see quality coaches giving instructions to our kids from the wee years to the late, late years, and that's what we want to see continue here. So, we hope that you'll give us the time to find a quality solution to what has been a huge staple in Bartow County for, in Cartersville City for a long time.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may suggest, I think there were some children outside that had some
Mayor, if I may suggest, I think there were some children outside that had some signs or something, and you might want to ask them to come in as it's getting late. Some of them may need to head home.
Sure, if they need to come up here, that's fine. Sure, come on up.
And it's cute, right, pulling the heartstrings a little bit. My name is Lee Akavet. I live at 34 Charles Street, so I'm literally right across from the gym. I won't say necessarily the part that was moving there was because of this and the program, but it's been amazing. He, my son is, his name is Penn. He is dyslexic, and the physical activity and the training and everything has absolutely helped him overcome that. It's been amazing. It's been one of the best things for him I've ever seen. Sorry. We went through this last year, when they were canceling the boys' program. It is not easy to find a quality gymnastics boys' program. You know, it's, I've been amazed at how much it's affected me and my family. You know, I helped coach Carter's Little League for a couple of years, and while that is an amazing program, it has not had an impact on the children that this gym, this gym has had, and it's all the coaches. The, what they pour into these kids is absolutely amazing. Now, with the emotional side of it over, I heard ethics tossed around a couple of times, and I, and I mean, it's, you can't say that any of this is ethical when something is going out for one bid. That is not an ethical business process. Open it up to multiple bids, and it goes more than just a dollar when something is going from public to private. Can't just take the first bid. That's not how, well, apparently it is how it works, it's not how it should work in any business. You open it up to multiple bids, best bid wins, all right? This was not the first, this was the first bid, as far as we know, I could be wrong, but nothing has been shared with us to tell us otherwise. I appreciate the deficit. Have four kids. We homeschool. It's very expensive. I can appreciate trying to pinch every penny and do well for the city. But it's my, also my understanding, a bunch of these programs are being cut right now. Our taxes keep going up, and you should have plenty of money to support $130,000, I understand. I don't know all the dollars. You know, bed up later for those very broad statements, I understand. But that's the way people see it, and that's ultimately the feeling of this city right now and all these people here, is that we kind of feel like we're kind of being ripped off a little bit, both from these great coaches and financially as well. And I understand not everyone there pays into the tax system, but, and I, from what I gather, the numbers we went over last night, more than half do. And I bet you the income that comes into this city by people coming in from out of town is more than the tax money being put into it. Now, it's simple economics, triple down economics, right? Money comes down. The taxes aren't the only funding for this program. It's all the money being spent, or here, sales tax, helping other businesses stay open. I mean, I guess that's it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Sir, we'd like those girls with their signs to come up next, if you would. Yeah. They've been waiting a long time, I think. And if they have a little spokesman, y'all can spread out however y'all want to.
So, most of the girls here are in level four, level five, level six.
Can I have your name and your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My name is Dana Bryant. Yes. So, I'm the mom of one of the girls here, and I'm not sure how much you guys know about the program that, with stingrays. And one of the things that we have been told is that they do not offer a program for level six or above. These girls here are currently level six and level five. So, we're looking at the potential of not even having a program for these girls to proceed with. My daughter alone, this is her seventh year at the gym. Just like all these other parents have said, we know the dedication and the time, the birthday parties that they've missed, the spend-the-night parties that they've missed, events that they have missed with their family, their friends. We know the time that they have put into this, and we respect their dedication, and we respect the coaches' dedication to this sport. You know, the coaches are our number-one priority, because they take care of our kids. We trust our kids with our coaches. We leave them at the gym, and we trust them. And we just would, just with everything, we just ask that you please reconsider. We definitely don't want these girls to have to say gymnast salute for the last time at our gym as Cartersville Twisters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer, are there any more children, somebody with children outside that wants to speak? Just, it's getting late, you know?
Yep.
And he get home for school or whatever.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. What's that?
Oh.
Did they delay it tomorrow?
It's an educational opportunity.
Yes. Okay. No one else? Okay. Sir, come forward.
Hello, everybody. My name is Andre Kuznetsov, 31 Aspen Line, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. I'm going to talk to, I'm currently running gymnastic program at Tulley Street, gymnastic coordinator. So, then maybe you have, if you have any specific question about program, you can ask me. I'll be real quick. You already heard about our program, and it's, what I can say, it takes a lot of years to build something like that. It's, Ms. H. started, she already talked about, was talking before, and I was, it was another director picking up, and then I pick it up after them. And it builds, it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort from our community, from parents, from coaches, from everybody to build that. It's so easy to break. It's, one signature may change everything. I'm not saying stingrays is a great guys. I know them. I thankful for them. They let our kids train this summer. I'm not saying anything wrong about their program. But when you collide the programs, it's going to be different. It's not going to be CTG anymore. It's not going to be, I'm not sure what it's going to be, but it's going to be completely different. That's what we worry about from coaches, standpoint, and with the new management, of course, they have a new manager, there's going to be different. Management might be as good, I don't know. And that's what coaches concerned about, the cool coaches who is working there. And we didn't talk to them yet, they didn't offer us anything yet, and because there was no time, it was just, just come up with to us with quick hit. And we worry about our future right now, pretty much because we losing our benefits, we losing our jobs, so, and we uncertain, the future uncertain. So, I worked 24 years for City, and now I don't get my full retirement, because in June, I'm done. So, and other coaches, different, different years and different time. So, that's, we, but mostly we concerned about the, our program, which we worked for for so many years. That's, that's it. And I hope you guys are going to make the decision, best decision. And we, we understand what City tries to do, we understand it's not enough money and stuff like that, but we, we are, we want to save this program, and with any way we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
My name's Chip Hood. I live at 486 New Rosedale Road in R. Murchie, 30105. Mr. Mayor and council, thank you all for having me. Thanks for the conversations today. And Ms. Hodge, thanks for the conversation with my wife yesterday. I'm also an elected official, and usually I'm on that side of the thing, so this is odd for me to be over here. I'm on the school board at Floyd County, and Mr. Roth, I appreciate your question early on in the work session about, hey, are we going to call the county school board when we're annexing this? Because we at Floyd County would like to know that, but I'm not here to talk about that. You know, you do things that your kids want to do. I think one of the other parents said something about not knowing really about gymnastics. Got two boys, I'm a football guy, but I've got a daughter who's a gymnast. And, you know, we go to Gym Dogs Meet, and I bet y'all don't know, but other than football, UGA Gymnastics brings in the most money to UGA. Y'all got a great program here. Y'all have done a good job. It's 30 years of a program, and at the school board and the city in Floyd County, where we're from, we always talk about quality of life. Y'all got the quality of life here. Y'all, you've got people like me, several others that are out here, that come from out of town to come here. We're the, the family that bought the car over here, the, you know, Yukon Denali from over here, because my wife's down here, my target bill's gone way up. We've always wanted a target in Rome, but I called the dealership today, Andy Welborn's a friend of mine, and he said, I said, do those taxes go to Floyd County or Bartow from us buying the car there? And he said, well, the taxes go to Floyd County. He said, but that, you buying that car there made it where I can keep paying my employees and keep doing things and paying taxes here in Bartow County. And by the way, I'm spending, fixing to spend $6 million redoing that dealership over there. So, I just wanted to say, from our point of view, from my point of view, it's all about this program. We come down here, my daughter, the reason that she's not here, she's a level seven. They're still practicing. They'll practice till 8:45 tonight, and then she'll be in the car every night of the week, on the way home till 9:30. She's a straight A student, and it takes dedication for that. On the school board, I know when people tell us all the time, we don't think about the kids. It's, it's all about the money. It is about the money, because if you don't have the money, you can't do things with kids. But I know in y'all's, there are things that y'all do that you might have a deficit on. There are things that you make money. I would just ask that you keep this program going and work with us, like we talked about today. You asked me what were some solutions that I had to solve this problem. I don't have all those solutions. We've got a great booster president over there. We have money. We have money to contribute. I think you brought up before about equipment. We've bought tons of equipment for that gym. We've kept it going. And then with the, the funds that we have, you've heard from parents before, that have said that, you know, I'd be willing to pay more to be here. The Boosters Club, if we need to fundraise, you know, I thought about, till I heard about 1.9, that with the stingrays over here, I thought, well, I'll call Andy Welborn, and we'll have, you know, big Riverside, but now, but by 1.9, we can't do that, because that's what we do with football stuff, we get sponsorships. And I guess my only point to the, to the stingrays is, just like the other lady that mentioned before, there's just too many unknowns, and they've known about this for this long, like they didn't know about the 1.9. They, we don't know if they're going to have our coaches or not, and that's really why most of these people are here, is because of the relationship they built with these coaches. We were at, and I'm almost finished, I'm finishing up, you know, we were at Rome, and she got the same news that, that we got here, that she's outgrown what they have there. And we came here, and this is probably, and I probably shouldn't say this, it's going to sound, you know, I remember growing up in the Olympics, and it was U, USA and the Russians, the Russians that, that were the coaches. We have more Russian coaches that are here, that got, that have great quality gymnastics program. And, you know, they've mentioned before, the guy that's at Stanford, there's guys at Georgia, there's girls, you know, that are all over, and y'all should be proud of that. I don't think you should beat yourself up because you have a deficit. Work with us, and hopefully in this next two weeks, you know, there will be a meeting, and we can work out and try to get that deficit going. I know that, Mr. Porter, your job is to make, make the finances look good for, for these guys that are elected by the people, but I would just, I appreciate y'all today making this decision to, to give us two weeks and, and working with us. That's what we want to do, is work together, because teamwork makes the dream work. So, I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Daniel Miller. I reside at 570 Alabama Road, Cartersville, Georgia. I don't know a lot about this, but my daughter is three years old, so she's in her first year at the gymnastics facility. So, I'm going to talk on a little bit of different aspect of what I'm hearing from here. So, my wife is also in, she's an attorney in town, she practices law here. And as my such, what I do is, I'm a bridge engineer, so I run $120 million a year company of revenue every year. So, outside of things of what everyone talk about as a good team and, and coaches they have, facility management can be thought about and looked at a different way. You can reduce the facility cost, but keep the quality. So, what I'm understanding, and like I said, I don't know much about this. I'm a high-level sport. I've wrestled with Gary Fox's son here in town. But my question is, is the council, or is any members help the facility facilitate maybe how we can cut costs or increase revenues? That would be one good start to where, where I would start at, is to, and that would support all these young ladies here and, and everybody else. I think, we're talking $130,000. I, I mean, I could sit here and think that we could definitely achieve that quickly with some other ways to maximize the square foot of the building. And like I said, you know, just as a facility manager, I, I think that, or management, I think there's techniques and methods that if everyone comes together, and that's including city members, coaches, whatever it is, I think you could target that and, and come together and, and make this at least a break even. But like I said, I think facility management is a key, from what I'm understanding, and I don't know this into depth, I think that would be a good start, and that we put a plan together, and, and that would be including everyone helping out and coming together. I mean, you know, some, some of the, the facility managements in my past would be, is to utilize the lighting time, utilize every square inch of the building, so whatever it is, and I don't know what to go into that, but I would be happy to, to help that out, but I think that would be a good start, though.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Yakavet. I reside at 34 Charles Street in Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. And hopefully, everything that I want to say is, for the most part, been said on how great of a program this is. I did have one question for y'all. Is it possible, as the city of Cartersville, to ever work hand-in-hand with the county? So, when you have gymnastics, for example, we all know it's an expensive sport. It can cost a lot of money. There, you don't find places where the city has a gymnastics gym and the county has a gymnastics gym. It's a sport that we can really all come together over. Is it possible to work together with Steve Taylor, people in the county, to be able to keep our coaches here, to keep the kids here, and to keep the program that we've known for essentially, what, 30-plus years now?
No, we can, like we do for the library and other entities, enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the county to share costs for any types of programs.
Is that something that y'all would consider moving forward with, and talking to Steve Taylor, for example?
I mean, I have communication with the county commissioner, county administrator and commissioner at different times, and if the council directs me to do that, I'd be glad to. I mean, they have their own recreational program, so they don't offer gymnastics.
Right.
To my knowledge, they've never have. As far as them subsidizing a city program?